Please call the roll.
Hoffman.
Here.
Lahr.
Here.
Swallow.
Here.
Bowman.
Here.
Parsons.
Here.
Brooks.
Here.
Adair.
On his way. Item four is discussion and action on the consent agenda. All of the following items which concern reports and items of a routine nature normally approved at city council meetings will be approved by one vote of the council. Any member of the council desiring to discuss an item on the consent agenda may request it to be removed from the consent agenda and placed for discussion as the next item on the regular agenda. It will then be considered separately. The consent agenda consists of the consideration and action on the following items. Approval of the minutes of the regular meeting on October 21st, 2024. Approval of the minutes of the special meeting on November 6th, 2024. Approval of claims in the amount of $377,220.14 and payroll expenses of $360,319.78. And approval of ASAP energy invoice for the airport in the amount of $30,565.42.
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Have motion from Mr. Parsons and a second from Mr. Hoffman to approve the consent agenda. Is there any further discussion? Please call the vote.
Parsons?
Yes.
Hoffman?
Yes.
Swallow?
Yes.
Bowman?
Yes.
Lahr?
Yes.
Brooks?
Yes.
Item six, reports from staff. Planning commission meeting on October 28th, 2024.
So, you want to come back to it? No. We had a planning commission meeting on the 28th, and we had two properties that had been asked to be rezoned from residential to general commercial. One was the properties surrounding the Sheracov West home, and then some property over for the Wesleyan Methodist Church. And the planning commission recommended both of those to the, recommend they both be approved to the city council. Obviously, in our special, our minutes in the special meeting, we did approve those two zoning efforts.
Any questions regarding the planning commission meeting? Thank you. Item B is Alva Hospital Authority Meeting on October 22nd, 2024. Mr. Bowman?
Okay, a couple of things. The nursing homes should close November 4th with Beatles to fully take over. The hope is December 1st. The senior site-like solutions program is going real well, and there's been a lot of interest there, and the new surgery staffs are staying busy.
Mr. Bowman, can I make a point of clarification? The comment period for the state of Oklahoma on the nursing home sale closed on November 4th.
Oh, okay.
Any questions for Mr. Bowman? Thank you. Item C, the Alva Public Library Board Meeting on November 18th.
Okay. Our meeting today basically was routine, and we, they were working on items to increase the adult participation at the library. The chalk-up fantasy went well with 91 desserts, and they raised about $11,000.
Any questions for Mrs. Swallow? Thank you. Item D is the Alva Arena Authority Meeting on November 5th, 2024. You can see the minutes in your packet there. They also did have their groundbreaking ceremonies last week out there, and so work is underway. If there's any questions, I don't know if Steve or I might be able to field them, but we can always get in touch with our representative and ask those if you guys have any. Item E is Tourism Tax Commission Meeting on October 16th, 2024. Mrs. Beer, can you give us a report on that?
It was a normal meeting. They did approve the 2025 all-school reunion, and we do meet this coming Wednesday, 11:20, and we do have a couple of requests, so any questions?
Next item is the Board of Adjustments Meeting on November 14th, 2024. Mr. Ford, can you fill that one?
Yep. So, earlier, we had, I guess last week, we had the Board of Adjustments meeting, first one since January of 2021. To look at Hawthorne's variance for a gentleman that unknowingly poured too much concrete on his property and was violating the 35% coverage part of our ordinances on that zoning, they finally voted, as you asked me, to grant the variance.
Just for everybody's understanding, the Board of Adjustments is the only board within our community that acts on its own, and so there won't, there's no appeals to city council on anything the Board of Adjustment would ever do. Any questions regarding that meeting?
Is that a commercial structure or residential?
Any other questions? Thank you. Next item is the Alva Regional Airport Commission Meeting on November 12th, 2024. Pretty quick meeting. We had one item on the agenda, and that was our capital improvement plan, our five-year capital improvement plan, which we submit to the FAA when they give us consideration for their funding. The plan itself includes apron expansion and some light project and hangar construction. And it's, it's not a set-in-stone plan. All of it depends on funding coming in and, you know, other, you know, if other priority were to come up, it could be changed. Any questions on the airport meeting? Parks and Recreation Commission Meeting on November 13th. Mrs. Swallow?
Routine business. Probably the biggest item was that the pool's going well, and that slides will be installed the first week of December.
Any questions for Mrs. Swallow? Thank you. Finance Committee Meeting from November 18th. Dr. Lahr?
Pretty routine. We have four new CDs coming up for bid. The general fund stabilization, airport stabilization, the AUA stabilization, and the airport fund CDs, about a little over 600,000 CDs, so we're going up for bids on those. Sadie's also got two of our, three of our ICS accounts set up, and she's working on getting the ICS set up for the airport, so that money will start making some interest as well. And outside of that, you know, all our major funds, the general fund, the AUA, and the ADA, they've all brought in more revenue than we've expended so far this year, so that's always a plus, so.
What bank are the ICS accounts at? That was Steve, off the table.
Any other questions regarding the Finance Committee Meeting? Thank you, Dr. Lahr. Next item is the Mayor's Report. I don't really have anything additional to report. Any questions for me? All right. Item L is the City Business Manager's Report.
Okay. So, first thing I got for you, everybody's got all these in front of you, okay? This would be placed in a baggie tied to the handle of one of the two new polycarts that everybody gets, and it's basically your rules for how you're going to place your polycarts, starting after December 1st. So, it should be on more than two tied to the handles. They are starting to lay down the, or to deliver the polycarts this week. They plan to have it done by the end of this week, have elevated their polycarts, and they're going to start bringing in the containers, the dumpsters, and putting those in this week as well. In the City Business Manager Report that I sent out to everybody, attached to the agenda, we do have what looks like is going to be the schedule, and just so it's public knowledge. Mondays will be the west edge of town to 12th Street and Oklahoma to the north, including Lee Mackey and Indiana Pike. Tuesday, all carts south of Oklahoma Boulevard. Wednesday, north side of Oklahoma from 12th to 7th. Tuesday, north side of Oklahoma from 7th to Lane. Friday's going to be the addition east of town, Woodlake addition, Hope Town, and any other private carts. This company's going to do things a little differently when there's a holiday. So, for example, last week, Monday, nobody ran, we didn't run trash because it was holiday. So, the people on management need to get picked up. These guys are going to basically, if that happens, they're going to slide everything one day to the right. So, if the holiday's on Monday, and Monday's your usual day, they will come pick up your stuff on Tuesday. So, it goes out, but that's kind of the plan. Those are the highlights I wanted to bring up.
Any questions for Mr. Ford? Thank you. Item seven is remarks and inquiries by citizens. We'll allow, anybody that care to make a comment, we'll ask that you, if you're able, please come up to the podium and state your name, and we'll give you two minutes to address the council. If you're not able to get to the podium, you can just raise your hand where you're at, and just make sure and tell us who you are for the record, and we'll give you your two minutes.
My name's Katie Church, and I want to speak about the proposal to privatize EMS and to listen to their proposals. When we had a town hall to set up for the 522, you asked the citizens, this council, some of you council members were on it, and the city asked the citizens to put their money behind our local EMS. We voted yes to do that. We put our money there to tax, to pay a tax to support our local EMS. How can you with a clear conscience now look at us and say, "We're just going to outsource them"? You're asking to outsource to a businessman, not your local neighbors who care and support for their community. How many on this board has ever performed CPR? Okay. Who on this board has listened to a family member perform CPR for 40 minutes while they're waiting for a private EMS to come across the county because they were running transfers instead of being there as a local service? What you are asking is to put our health in the hands of a businessman who is there to turn a profit instead of have our, our health and our lives in the hands of our neighbors who care for us and have paid for their training out of pocket. The city didn't pay for our paramedic. She paid for that out of her own pocket because she loves and supports this community, and she wants to be there to help our citizens. They have paid for their advanced certificates. They have put their money to support our community, and you asked the citizens to do it, and now you're trying to take our tax money and privatize it. If you guys are going to privatize it, then I think Alva needs to give up their 522 money that they receive, plain and simple. And I don't know what we need to do to maybe get that passed. If you're going to privatize it, you don't have any right to the money you asked us to put forth to support our local EMS service at all. I mean, I don't understand how you can say one thing and then turn around and do another.
Any additional public comment? Thank you all for being here this evening.
I do. So, mine is also about outsourcing EMS.
Can you please tell us your answer?
Oh, sorry. I am Danielle Harden. My question and the things I want you guys to think about is, you're outsourcing EMS. You're going to say it's local because they're going to be here, but that's not technically true. Just because they're here, they might be taking a million transfers and stuff, and so just because they're coming this way does not mean that they are local. You're going to have, let's say, let's say you've got two EMS trucks that are local. They both took transfers. They left nobody to help. They might have somebody coming to the county, but that doesn't mean they're local. They could be from, let's say they're 40, 45 minutes away. What are you going to do if somebody is having a cardiac arrest, or can't breathe, or anything like that? In my opinion, I want to know what you guys are going to do, because in my opinion, it's going to cost lives. You have your EMS here. You have them local. They're here to help you. They care about the community. They do everything they possibly can to help the community, and they are there in a few minutes' time. A few minutes versus 30, 45 minutes, even 20 minutes makes a huge difference when you're having a major problem, and I think that's something you guys really need to think about because it is, I mean, it's a community thing, and it is going to cost lives, in my opinion.
Anyone else that would like to address the council?
Heather Morris, also EMS. I just would like to say, I'm a dispatcher, and I can tell you that in experience in other places, we have ambulance services who promise, they're, they're private, they promise they're going to have someone local, they promise they're going to have someone, and they have someone, they have EMTs that are in their truck all night, sleeping at the county line because they don't have enough ambulances to go around. If that's what you guys want, then privatize it. If not, stick with our local people who give a crap about us. That's all I have to say.
You know what? I got a question. Kenneth Ferris. I was on the ambulance for 18 years. I was on sanitation for almost 20 years. We've already got rid of our sanitation. We're looking at possibly doing it with the ambulance. Are we going to do this with the water department and the, and the street department? I'm just curious. Are we going to have any department that you guys take care of?
Anybody else care to make a comment? Thank you all for being here. Item A is a presentation from City Economics. Roger Godwin's here with us, and I'll give him the floor.
Good evening, everybody. I want to let you know that today I did not get stuck. They got me got a four-wheel drive. It was really nice. We're out and about Alva today and just going through and looking at different properties that you guys have here that are vacant, ones that are being underutilized, things like that. Today, we recognized about 26, and I'll make sure to have that in next month's report for you guys. Been up here twice this month, this being our second one. We were up here for the Woods County event, and I don't know if you guys have seen this or not, but Jeremy had it for you guys here. It gets Freedom, Wenoka, as well as Alva. Lot of good, quick information. If you guys have not seen that, I'm going to actually leave this with you guys, so for it can see it and give it out to you guys. Have a couple of things with the city by the numbers. We're going to meet up with you guys. Shows taxes for the month of October and September, also the complex. So, I know that's a big asset that you guys have, so I wanted to make sure to show that. So, you guys are up 38.9% compared to last year, which is really great. 2021 was a little bit slow, up 57% from 2020. So, that's always good stuff. Building permits, you guys have had three building permits, total of three permits, 16 issued, as well as renewal of business licenses, as well as residential home sales was three this month. We've compiled a couple of things you guys should have in front of you. We did a place or AI report for the car show that you guys had. You had 4,800 individual people show up, which is pretty amazing, which is up 67% from last year. Total visits averaged around 33 minutes, so you guys had a lot of people coming in and out, as well as have people come in from all over the community, as well as outside the community as well. So, if you guys wanted to look over those reports just on your own time, you guys had people hit McDonald's, Walmart, Sonic, even the state bank, Alva State Bank and Trust, Love's Country Stop, Holder's Grocers, Cinema, as well as hanging out over the university, the Ranger Mark and Shepherd. So, people are hitting, hitting, hitting spots here in Alva, as well as outside the community as well. Pretty good stuff. And then over at the Arc, you guys had 3,500 people come out there, which is 38% up. You guys can have that in your city by the numbers, but it has a lot more detail for you guys inside the, the place or report. So far this month, we've been able to receive about 50% of staff reports on the survey, and recent, if you guys have not actually gotten your survey, I know Swallow did, as well as Joe got his today, so if you guys, and Bowman also got his, but if you guys have not gotten your survey via email, let me know. I've re-sent it a couple of times. Just let me know via email on that. We're looking to finish up that from elected officials, as well as staff. And I've gotten a summary report for you guys on, it's about 22 pages. I took it down from 36 pages. So, these are just kind of some basic things that we've gotten from staff, surveyed, asking some specific questions, which you'll see, and their majority answers, as well as a overview on the bottom. So, there's 22 pages of reading whenever you're ready to go to sleep. And then, I mean, that's a thing, right? I mean, I already go to sleep. It helps me out. Also, want to make sure we provided a activity log for you guys. Transparency was one of the things we made sure to share with you guys, so you guys do have that on your, at your space, to show what we're doing, why we're doing, and all those things. It doesn't have time, but, you know, we spent a good 40-plus man-hours this month getting things done and put together for you guys. And today, like I said, we saw 26 properties, as well as had to purchase a couple of printed items today, and I got two candy cane bucks, so I'm very excited about it. People in the community, talked to a couple of realtors, talked to some community partners, and they are very excited about the Christmas tree lighting, as well as the festivals you guys are having and going on. So, any, any questions you guys have for me?
All right. Looking forward to everything else that's to come. Thank you.
Excited about it. Thanks, guys. And lady.
Item number nine is discussion and action to authorize a city business manager to spend in excess of his spending limit to have the road grader repaired. Mr. Ford, I'll let you take that.
Yeah, like, so we don't know exactly what's wrong with it yet, and we think it's something with the engine system, but just, we can get it running long enough to move it about 20 feet, and then it dies, and we don't have the knowledge to get that fixed. We're going to take it to the yellow box or yellow house over there and get it repaired. The problem is, we don't have any idea what it's going to cost, so.
What year is the grader ballpark?
I don't know. It's 20 years old. Okay. Probably 15 years old. I mean, it's been running good, just all of a sudden start having issues.
I don't have a problem approving this, but I'd assume for some reason you get in there and it's like way more than you're thinking, that it could be something where, I mean, if it's, makes more sense to look at, and I know it's an expensive piece of equipment, but I mean, to put a ton of money in something that's 15, 20 years old, I mean...
If it's stupid, I'll bring it back.
You'll bring it back to decide whether we want to repair, trade in, look at used or new. Okay.
Can, can we, Drew, I don't know if we can do this the way this is written, if we can maybe authorize manager to go ahead and get it in the shop and get a quote?
Yeah.
And then come back? Is that, are we, are we holding up projects, or?
Yeah, well, we are. So, we've been trying to get Skyline back in order after all this rain and everything, and it's going to be tough to do without a grader.
Will the Cali Lewis a grader?
I don't know if they'd want us to order leases for them. I'd have to ask.
I think that'd be a good option.
Like, so I'm not, I know it has to be done, I just want to make sure that, you know, if it's crazy numbers, that might make sense to...
Well, I feel, I would feel better if the council would go ahead and get it in for a quote and then call a special meeting to approve that. That does not require any council action, but we could take council action to that effect if you guys would so choose. All right. Item 10, discussion and action to approve City of Alva Ordinance 2024-004 and ordinance amending the employee retirement system defined benefit plan for the City of Alva, Oklahoma by adopting a revised and restated retirement plan providing retirement benefits for eligible employees of the City of Alva, Oklahoma. Mr. Ford, I want you to take that.
Essentially, some IRS rules changed, and it caused the retirement fund to have to review our current retirement fund, and they made some small changes in the retirement plan to amend the IRS requirements.
So, this ordinance amendment keeps us in compliance with current law?
Yes.
Any questions from the council? Discussion? Entertained a motion?
Motion to approve City of Alva Ordinance 2024-004 as stated in the agenda.
Second.
Have a motion from Dr. Lahr and a second from Mr. Hoffman to approve City of Alva Ordinance 2024-004 as stated in the agenda. Any further discussion? Please call the vote.
Lahr?
Yes.
Hoffman?
Yes.
Adair?
Yes.
Brooks?
Yes.
Parsons?
Yes.
Bowman?
Yes.
Swallow?
Yes.
Item 11, discussion and action to approve appointment of Mr. Justin J. Lane to the City of Alva Board of Adjustments. This is a vacancy on the Board of Adjustments that was, has been there since Mr. Jeff Cohen passed away. The Board of Adjustments, as Steve mentioned in the report earlier, hadn't met in quite some time, but we need to fill that vacancy. Mr. Lane is willing to serve in that capacity, and I recommend him for council approval. I'm happy to answer any questions.
I'd make a motion to approve appointment of Mr. Justin J. Lane to the City of Alva Board of Adjustments.
Have a motion from Mr. Parsons, a second from Mr. Bowman to appoint Mr. Justin J. Lane to the City of Alva Board of Adjustments. Is there any further discussion?
I'm just curious, because I don't know anything about him. What kind of background does he have to qualify for?
He, he moved to Alva for college and stayed. He has been the manager at Fechner Public Supply for a good number of years. He's kind of got a little bit of, you know, background in some construction prior to, I guess several years ago. He did some water sprinkler installation type activities and stuff like that. I don't know everything that he's done, but he's, he's, you know, have kids in our school system, and he's had, you know, different dealings.
As I was going to say, I know he's licensed real estate agent, too, so.
Oh, okay.
I mean, as far as to protect the property and stuff like that, that's, I think it's great.
So, he's pretty qualified.
Yeah, he's qualified. Any other questions or discussion? Entertained a motion? Oh, I already got a motion. Any other discussion? All right, none. Okay. Please call the vote.
Parsons?
Yes.
Bowman?
Yes.
Swallow?
Yes.
Lahr?
Yes.
Brooks?
Yes.
Hoffman?
Yes.
Adair?
Yes.
Item 12, this is regarding Mr. Cookson's permit. I'm going to ask that we table this and have staff follow up with Mr. Cookson, and then if it needs to be brought back before council that we do that. I think there was some opportunity maybe for better communication with Mr. Cookson, and so I want to ask that that be tabled until everything's communicated, you know, as we intended to be.
I'll motion be tabled.
Hold on a second.
Have a motion from Mr. Brooks and a second by Mr. Parsons to table action on item number 12 in the agenda. Is there any further discussion? Please call the vote.
Brooks?
Yes.
Parsons?
Yes.
Swallow?
Yes.
Adair?
Yes.
Bowman?
Yes.
Lahr?
Yes.
Hoffman?
Yes.
Thank you for being here this evening. We'll move to item 13, discussion and action to authorize the city finance director to create ICS account that will be funded by the airport checking account. This is actually to take, you know, the money that the airport has in a non-interest-bearing account, move it into an interest-bearing account. And Dr. Lahr, I think you mentioned that, didn't you?
Yeah.
In your report. And so, this is the action that'll allow our treasurer to go ahead, the finance director and treasurer to create that, create that account. Is there any discussion on that? I entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to authorize the city finance director to create an ICS account that will be funded by the airport checking account.
Second.
Second.
Have a motion by Mr. Bowman, a second by Mrs. Swallow, to authorize the city finance director to create an ICS account for the Alva Airport Checking, or from the Alva Airport Checking Account, as stated in the agenda. Is there any further discussion? Please call the vote.
Bowman?
Yes.
Swallow?
Yes.
Hoffman?
Yes.
Adair?
Yes.
Brooks?
Yes.
Lar?
Yes.
Parsons?
Yes.
Bowman?
Yes.
Thank you for being here this evening.
I guess I'll start by saying that I'm not going to recommend that we approve anything today. I do want to hear the proposals, if we have people to...
No, this was, this is basically just to get the proposals in front of council members.
Okay.
And the next action I have is to tell me which ones it must be presentations from.
So in the packet, you would have gotten your proposals. Conversation, and I'll just, all were in the target. Conversation coming up because EMS is a very important service to our community. It's one that we have had quite a bit of financial hardship in trying to provide that service to our community, and it's also one that we've been increasingly responsible for providing services outside of Alva, even. The 522 district that was passed, I'm sorry if someone stated otherwise, but I recall sitting right here as Daniel Winter sat in that chair and said the 522 district has no bearing on whether the EMS stays, you know, within the City of Alva management, or whether it is contracted out to an entity that might be better suited to perform that service for our community. The funding of that 522 is to provide ambulance services for our community, and whatever it takes to do that in the best way possible is what we need to do. Whenever we considered at that time, it was actually prior to the 522 vote, we considered at that time, we did have a proposal that was considered by the city council to privatize at that time. And at that time, it was felt that our staff and our volumes would be able to come around in a fashion that we weren't having to supplement as much of that service as what we've had to supplement. You know, whenever we have any of our departments that operate out of the general fund, if we, if we can't operate them efficiently, we need to be looking for ways that we can. You know, we, we have purchased trucks, we have purchased equipment, we have spent a lot of money trying to give this service what it needs in order to be viable, financially viable for the City of Alva. The prospect of seeking proposals was to see, are we, are we doing the best we can for the taxpayers? And honestly, anything that's in the general fund is just coming out of your water bill. I mean, it's how we pay for the things that we can't afford to pay for in the general fund. And so, you know, these proposals that we've got to look at, if we want to have Steve have one or both of them come back and make presentation to the council, then I think that's, you know, probably the, that's the next item on the agenda that we, you know, direct him to get them scheduled to come back and talk to us. And this is, this is not sneaky. This is a public agenda that it is right there, so everybody knows, so you guys have an opportunity to come speak about it. We want to hear, you know, you know, maybe we, when you go out and seek proposals, maybe you find out that you're doing things just as well as anybody else will do it for you. And so that's, that's what we need to, we either need to confirm that we're still doing the right thing, or we need to confirm that there's a better way to move forward. And you don't get that in closed meetings, you get that in open meetings like this, where we have the discussion, where we listen to the proposals, and where we hear all of the information. It's not in silos. With that, I welcome any of the council members that would be, you know, willing to share thoughts or concerns regarding this. This is item 14 on the agenda, that's what we've, we've got it here for, so that people can hear what you think, and, and we can have the discussion.
I know, I know it's not equipment, so what is the biggest problem?
Financially, when we look at the past couple of years' budgets, and I, we've underperformed on revenue and overachieved on expenses, and at the end of the day, we, I don't feel like we're moving in a direction that's going to allow us to close that gap. We're sitting here today, four months into the year, haven't, haven't made any of our debt payments yet on the equipment, but, you know, if we throw the debt payments in, we're probably going to be at about 900, and I figured it up earlier, it was like 980,000, we talked about it at finance committee, about $980,000 in expenses. We budgeted 875. So that's, you know, $115,000 over, over budget on expenses. Revenue's coming in about where we projected it to, and that puts us at about a $350,000 loss, which we budgeted at $250,000 loss, roughly. It's, it's not the equipment. We, we're making those provisions. The, it's either, it's gotta be the volumes or just the cost of doing business is in excess of what we're able to manage effectively financially. And I think any elected official should be looking at the dollars. We're talking about taxpayer dollars here, we're talking about utility dollars here, and if we're not looking at that, we're being irresponsible. So this is a responsible exercise to look at these proposals. It would be irresponsible to come in here and make a decision tonight without having looked at everything and taken into, all of that into consideration, you know. Between now and when we hear the proposals, I would anticipate that y'all need to be, you know, asking questions as council members about our budget. You know, what, what are we seeing with revenue? What are we seeing with the expenses? You know, and is it trending in a direction that, you know, two years ago, we thought would trend in a different way, or three, however many years ago it was when we went to Pafford. But that's, that's the conversation, right here in front of the camera, right here in front of all of you, we're not hiding anything. Council members, you have discussion?
How's our staffing been for ambulance service on the other? Do we have the right amount of people? Because I see the ambulance is running all the time.
We're, we're short a few. So try, try recruit folks out here to, to come to Alva to be an EMTs, really difficult. I'm trying to keep hold up, sorry, Drew.
My biggest thing on the deal is, it, and I know private business will always be more efficient than government, I understand that, but, I mean, we have two companies that want to come here and do business, and that's because they've found a way, and I know they, they're doing companies, they're all over, and they have experience, and they know how to really run probably an efficient service, but there's two companies here that it's a lucrative business opportunity for them, they want to be in our community. And to me, if that's the case, I mean, I, and I know you guys have been working on this for way longer than I've been on council, and trying to find an effective way to provide our community with a quality EMS care that's, is within the budget. But, I mean, if, to me, I, I understand that there's nothing more important than making sure that we take care of taxpayer dollars, that's, that's our job, but also, I, I do understa, you know, this is, to me, is a little bit different than trash. And on the trash deal, it's equipment problems here, I mean, there's gotta be, there, there's some reason why they can come in and, and want to be here to make money, and, and we can't figure out how to do it and break even. And I know they, the city has to pay them a substantial amount just to get them to come here, so, I mean, I get that it's a hard business to be in, but, and maybe this is something Steve could look into, is there any sort of consultant and that could, you know, come in and look at what we're doing and tell us, you know, this is what you need to do to be better? Or is it going to be something that the company's gonna come in, and they're gonna run with less people, they're gonna have less ambulances here, they're gonna have less overhead than what we have, and of course, it's gonna be more profitable, but they're gonna provide less of a service? And if it's one of those things where we, I mean, just like when we bought the new ambulances, that, that was a hard thing for me to vote to do, because I, I love the idea of having to do equipment, but it's a lot of money, it's a big debt payment, and whenever that happened, that, those, one of my worries is, you know, you know, can we afford it? And I know you have to have quality transportation, you don't want to be broken down beside the road with someone trying to get to you in there or, or fund the transport, I understand that, but I, I, from people I've talked to, I've had a overwhelming response, and this is just from one Facebook post made today, and, I mean, people do not want it to outside of service. I truly believe that, but I know we have to watch the taxpayer dollars, and, and the, you know, municipal government funding is extremely difficult, and I, I get that, I know, I'm with Steve all the time about find, where, where can we save money? Where can we save money? And I, and I understand he's, that we're just doing our job, stewards of the taxpayers' dollars, trying to find areas to save money, but I think, you know, I would be curious to, you know, sit down and have, I, as a council member, I've never sat down and had a conversation with the director of our EMS, and that's my fault, I should have done that. I should have, before this even was here, and say, you know, what, explain to me why things are the way they are, but, I mean, I don't, I understand why you want to hear the proposal, but I just think it's, it's going to be something that is not supported by a lot of our community, and if a company would come in and guarantee that they're gonna run the ambulance like we have with the amount of ambulances, the amount of people here at the time that we have people, maybe it's something that we could look at, but that doesn't seem like that's probably gonna be a profitable thing for someone to do, so I assume that they're gonna do things a little bit differently than we are, so, I mean, it would have to be a way where we could provide the same or higher level of care for our citizens. I mean, at the end of the day, that's what it's all about, so.
Nothing would be done without a contract, and contract terms would be whatever we say they need to be.
I just want to say, are you...
I'm sorry, I'm sorry. We're gonna keep the decorum here, we had the public comment earlier today. But we'll, we'll keep decorum here as, as council discussions this time.
I'd like to see the presentations and what the answer, you know, any doubts or concerns that the public have, and, to see what they have to say.
I will say, if we do hear presentations, and I don't know what the proper way to post as agenda, I want it where the people doing the presentation aren't just answering to us, they're answering to the citizens, because, I mean, at the end of the day, I mean, that, it's, they're providing their service, too, so I think, I don't know how we have to, you know, if it's a public forum, or how you do that, where if, if we do listen to these presentations, I want people to have plenty of time to ask every question that they have, and I know with how open meetings are, we can't discuss something that's, we have to stick pretty with the agenda and the public comments pass, so Mayor Parker didn't mean to cut you off, we just legally have to stick to this.
Well, I understand, a citizen needed help, and who went to him? Out of EMS, not the private company that's the businessman wanting to make the money.
So, but I definitely think that there should be time for citizens to be able to ask all those questions and get those questions answered, because it is something that's very important to a lot of people and to our communities, so.
Jeffrey, you recommending a town hall?
I think that would be better than just a presentation to council.
I'm fine hearing the proposal, but I don't think the town hall's a bad idea. I mean, I don't know what the, with the normally procedure that we have, them do a proposal here, and then we have the council second, or do we just normally?
Well, there's no right or wrong way to do it. It's just how, you just need to post it, and I think with a town hall, we probably wouldn't want to have, on this topic anyway, we probably wouldn't want to have it during the regular council meeting, we'd probably want to schedule something second. That would be my, my most opinion, too. Maybe a larger... Probably something bigger than city hall. Any other discussion on the, on the topic for item 14?
All right, I'll go to item... I have one more thing. I don't want any, because I, I know this is hard, I mean, we have EMS staff members out here, and I know they're sitting here thinking, am I gonna have a job tomorrow? I'm not appreciative, and I don't want, I don't want that to be going through your mind, because just because this came to council, this is not even the, you know, it's something that's gonna happen. And I, you know, as a council member, as a citizen, I recognize and I see the things that you guys do, that you go above and beyond, you're just like, stuff like being at the fair, community interaction, I mean, that's stuff that is extremely important to me, and being there for the community, and I see that as a council member, and I appreciate each and every one of you, and I thank you for coming here today, and, and, like I said, you all are very appreciated, and I understand the work you guys do every day is super important to keep our citizens safe, and, like I said, thank you all for coming and being here.
Council? All right. We'll move to item 15, action to direct city business manager to arrange EMS privatization presentations from select companies. So I think what I'm hearing is that we need a motion to schedule a town hall for both companies to make their presentations. So I'd entertain a motion.
Well, a motion may approve item 15 as listed there.
I would say if it's as listed, that, that wouldn't encompass the town hall.
Well, we have to have a, I mean, the town hall's not in there.
I think that's on, on target enough, it'd be okay.
Okay.
Because they have, public would have notice on it. So I would just, if you're wanting a town hall, I would let that motion die without being seconded, and then...
All right, so, looks like that motion dies for lack of a second. I would entertain another motion if there is one.
I'll make a motion for the city business manager to arrange an EMS presentation in a town hall format for both companies interested in offering the service.
I'd second that. Have a motion by Mr. Bowman, a second by Mr. Adair, to direct city business manager to arrange for EMS privatization presentations in a town hall format for the select companies.
So is there no issue if it's not listed in the agenda that way?
Well, I think where that's on topic and, generally in the same realm, I think we're okay there.
Okay.
Because public has notice of what may come out of that action item, so a town hall presentation being similar or not, I think we're fine.
Okay. And, you know, this item does not say at a city council meeting or anything like that, so to specify town hall, I think, just adds more specificity to it. I think I would just, in just further discussion, I'd start by saying the select companies are MEMS and Survival Flight are the two companies that would be considered the select companies. There any further discussion?
Along with the town hall, I'd like to just say, in my opinion, I want to make sure we, I don't know how big a... we, I don't know how big a parade is, but I'd like to see it well advertised a couple weeks in advance, maybe even put a slip in with utility bills or something, because, I mean, this is, this is something that's not just a simple decision, this is a really big deal to a lot of people, so just make sure, you know, when we're doing this, I know it's our duty as council members to look at all possible options for the city, but make sure it's well advertised and that everybody, they would have to try hard not to know when it is, what time, and all that, because I really make sure it's well advertised. There you go.
Any further discussion? I'd entertain a, or please call the vote.
Bowman?
Yes.
Adair?
Yes.
Parsons?
Yes.
Lahr?
Yes.
Swallow?
Yes.
Hoffman?
No.
Brooks?
Yes.
All right. Item 16 is discussion and action to enter into executive session pursuant to 25 OS 307B1 to discuss FY 2526, City of Alba and IFF Local 3782 negotiations. Is there a motion entering the executive session?
I would move if we enter into executive session pursuant to the agenda items listed upon the council.
Here, you do the second.
Have a motion by Mr. Adair, and a second by Mr. Bowman, to enter into executive session for item 16 on the agenda. Is there any further discussion? Please call the vote.
Adair?
Yes.
Bowman?
Yes.
Hoffman?
Yes.
Lahr?
Yes.
Swallow?
Here.
Carson?
Yes.
Brooks?
Yes.
And Mr. Hoffman will join us when they get back. Item 17 is action on FY 2526, City of Alba and IFF Local 3782 negotiations. There's no action coming out of executive session on that. Item 18 is new business, and we do not have anything, to my knowledge, that would meet the requirements for new business. Item 19, remarks and inquiries by council members.
I've had a couple of people ask about the road out at, by the fairgrounds of that project. As far as quality of work, is there anything, any thoughts on that, anything we can?
We're going to redo it next summer.
Have they already been paid?
No, we're paying for materials, because we actually recovered most of that gravel out there, and we're going to keep it and use it for, like, as a base for when we put new water lines in, so we're going to reuse the material, we're paying for the material, paying for zero labor.
Good.
So we're going to reset it next summer and do it ourselves correctly.
Any other remarks and inquiries by council members?
I would like to commend the Alba Police Department and the Alba Fire Department for the excellent job that they did in setting up the send-off to state for the high school cross-country team. Become kind of a tradition when one of the teams qualifies for state, that the police and fire go out, they do the, kind of the drive-through town, have the big send-off, they did an amazing job, it was incredible, I think those kids really appreciate it, and I love seeing that.
Any other remarks and inquiries by council members?
I had the owner, I don't know if anybody brought up, the owner of Wicked Threads hit me up about the building next door, her falling apart and smelling, not very good. I told her to, since she's complained quite a bit, I told her to do it on the app, the way it can be documented. So I don't know, I guess windows have been falling out, the owner's not taking care of it.
Any other remarks and inquiries by council members? All right, we'll adjourn the city council meeting, city council meeting, and open the regular meeting of the Alba Economic Development Authority. Please call the roll.
Hoffman?
Here.
Lahr?
Here.
Swallow?
Here.
Bowman?
Here.
Parsons?
Here.
Brooks?
Here.
Adair?
Here. Item 3 is discussion and action on the consent agenda. All of the following items which concern reports and items of routine nature normally approved at AUA meetings will be approved by one vote of the authority. Any trustee desiring to discuss an item on the consent agenda may request that it be removed from the consent agenda and placed for discussion as the next item on the regular agenda. It will then be considered separately. The consent agenda consists of the consideration and action on the following items. Item A, approval of the minutes of the regular meeting, October 21st, 2024. And item B, approval of claims in the amount of sixty-four thousand, four hundred and sixty-three dollars and three cents, and payroll expenses of thirty thousand, eight hundred, seventy-five dollars and eight cents. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
Hold on a second. Have a motion from Mr. Adair, a second from Mr. Parsons to approve the consent agenda. Is there any further discussion? Please call the vote.
Adair?
Yes.
Parsons?
Yes.
Lahr?
Yes.
Swallow?
Yes.
Bowman?
Yes.
Hoffman?
Yes.
Brooks?
Yes.
Item 5 is new business, we don't have anything that meets the requirements for new business.
Item 6 is to adjourn, so we will do that. And we'll call and order the regular meeting of the Alba Utility Authority. When you're ready, please call the roll.
Hoffman?
Here.
Lahr?
Here.
Swallow?
Here.
Bowman?
Here.
Parsons?
Here.
Brooks?
Here.
Adair?
Here.
Item 3 is discussion and action on the consent agenda. All of the following items which concern reports and items of routine nature normally approved at AUA meetings will be approved by one vote of the authority. Any trustee desiring to discuss an item on the consent agenda may request that it be removed from the consent agenda and placed for discussion as the next item on the regular agenda. It will then be considered separately. The consent agenda consists of the consideration and action on the following items. Item A, approval of the minutes of the regular meeting of October 21st, 2024. And item B, approval of claims in the amount of two hundred, two thousand, three hundred twenty-four dollars and thirty-nine cents, and payroll expenses of seventy-two thousand, four hundred, twenty-nine dollars and eighty-six cents. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Have a motion from Mr. Bowman, a second from Mr. Hoffman to approve the consent agenda. Is there any further discussion? Please call the vote.
Bowman?
Yes.
Hoffman?
Yes.
Lahr?
Yes.
Parsons?
Yes.
Brooks?
Yes.
Swallow?
Yes.
Adair?
Yes.
Item 5, discussion and action to direct the City of Alba Business Manager and/or designated staff to develop utility billing appeals policy and procedure for Alba Utility Authority I've had a couple of meetings that have dealt with disputed utility bills, and learned in that process that there's no level, any level of appeals process for our utility customers, either at the local or county or state level or anything. And so, this item is here so that we can discuss whether or not, and maybe other considerations that we would want, if we would want the City of, the Business Manager to bring back a policy and procedure for us on, for appealing utility bills. Floor is open.
Could that be something that's something like by the Water, Waste Water Committee? Or, I mean.
We have like an, or a committee that just met as needed for that?
We want, if I were to do that, I would recommend we pull Finance Committee and Water, you know, Water, Waste Water Committee sanitation, and maybe we just bring somebody off of, make sure we got representation from all of those committees and go that route. I don't have the list in front of me.
I mean, or just develop, I mean, you could just develop a new committee at that point too.
We have, we can, we can do that. And, oh, if we did that, who would want to serve on it? Not you?
I mean, is there anything that, does it have to be a committee, or could it just give the whole, the council? I mean, could it be something that's?
Well, the way this is written, it's, you know, if we, if we say so, you know, what I envision is Steve going out, seeing if there are any other cities out there that have an appeals process. If there aren't any cities out there that have an appeals process, what other utilities have an appeals process? Bring us back that information, maybe chat GPT and policy together and see if AI can help us out, but.
About three seconds.
And, but then, you know, clearly whatever, I, I've asked around with other cities, not saying there's not one out there, but I had it in my contacts, so I think we may very well be doing something from scratch. And, you know, and I would just say, whatever we do, we make sure that we're looking out for both the best interests of our utility customers, but also the City of Alba. We need to do things that are responsible and evidence-based, so, but, I mean, you want to have a committee, you want to send Steve to put something together for us, you want to?
That's all, that's more accurate, that's all this does, is tells him to put something together and bring it back to you. So. I think that's a good start, just go see what you can find. Yeah. See what ChatGPT can do. Bring us some info back, and we go from there, on what we want and want to change and whatnot.
I'll make a motion to direct the City of Alba Business Manager and/or designated staff to develop a utility billing appeals policy and procedure. And I'll just stop right there.
Hold on a second. So you stopped right there, is that because you don't want it to come back to the Utility Authority?
I thought that's what we had just decided.
Well, I think it's, if we, he's the best.
I mean, I guess we're.
He can bring it back, so.
I'm just making sure that wasn't a, you didn't want it to come back, but you actually do want it to come back?
Yes.
Okay. Have a motion from Mr. Bowman, a second from Mr. Parsons, right? To direct the City Business Manager or designated staff to develop utility billing appeals policy and procedure for AUA consideration.